Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Shakopee School Board Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau. Tonight, we're gathered at River Valley Church. My name is Michael Clem. I'm an attorney at Hellmuth and Johnson and a member of the Chamber, and I will serve as moderator tonight. All candidates for Shakopee School Board were invited to participate. With us this evening are Joe Aldrich, Chad Johnson, Brian Kane, David Melby, Kristy Peterson, Zachary Pearson, Nick Stepka, and Caroline Valdez. The candidates are arranged in alphabetical order. The candidates have already recorded video interviews to introduce themselves to the community. And you can see those online, so the candidates will not make opening statements tonight. I encourage you to watch the videos on the Shakopee Chamber website. Tonight, the candidates will be asked a series of questions. They will have sixty seconds to respond to each question unless otherwise noted. The first question tonight will go to Joe Aldrich. What have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
So when my daughters were in school, I was a soccer coach eight, nine different times. I taught religion for three different years. And I volunteered at Red Oak one year. I was teaching third graders some fun math, going with my specialty. And I've also been on the school board for the last four years.
Chad Johnson, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
Thanks. Like Joe, I also did some volunteering at Red Oak Elementary. My wife was on the PTO. And so I also did some volunteering with the PTO, putting to their school directory, volunteering with some of the school events, like their silent auction and stuff like that. I was a den leader and then Pinewood Derby Race Director and then committee chair for Cub Scout PAC 619. And then, most recently, I coached a Lego robotics team for fifth and sixth graders.
Brian Kane, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
I have volunteered two or three seasons coaching my daughters and other young kids in soccer. And I've also volunteered for two or three years as chairperson for the church festival. And I have also been involved in parish council and in my kids' education at Shakopee Area Catholic School.
David Melby, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
Well, I have two kids in the Shakopee school system. They're in third and fifth grades. And I volunteer at their school. I've been chaperoned to some of their fun events. So it's as much fun for me as it is for them. And I have worked in Sunday School for the past ten years. A lot of the people in our community go to the same church. And they, so I've helped out leading and supervising the Sunday School program. And then also, we, our kids, you know, are still school age, so they have a lot of friends. And we bring them to fun events like parks and swimming. And then there's the birthday parties. And so we, you know, like to make a positive impact on the neighborhood kids.
Kristy Peterson, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
Well, I've been involved in the community since I've lived here in Shakopee since 1999. I've been past president of the Shakopee Girls Fast Pitch Softball Association. I've been a board member for the Shakopee Education Endowment Foundation, which gives grants to teachers in the classrooms. I was involved in the referendum for the expansion of the high school back in 2014, I believe it was. And obviously, I've been on the school board for the past four years. And I've also been involved in the Minnesota State School Board Association, Board of Directors, representing many of the schools in Scott and Carver Counties. But one of the things that I feel I've really contributed to impact students' lives is being in the classroom over the past four years, with minus COVID years, but reading to the kids, seeing the kids in the classroom and speaking to kids at the high school. That's been really meaningful for me.
Zachary Pearson, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
Well, in the past, I haven't done a whole lot, to be totally honest with you. I've only been a Shakopee resident for two years. Other than bringing my wonderful fifth grade daughter to this school district, that's about the only thing I've done thus far. But my hope is to make a positive change with this run for school board.
Nick Stepka, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
Well, I volunteer my time with my wife, two different Girl Scout troops. And I also help out with my, one of my other daughter's Girl Scout troops when it comes to mechanical stuff and other things like that. I'm usually the one that they rely on to help teach the girls. And I also helped with the construction of the adaptive park over by Lions Park over there.
And Caroline Valdez, what have you done in the past to positively impact the students of Shakopee?
In the past, I have volunteered for Shakopee Area Catholic Schools when my kids went to school there. I have been a volunteer coordinator for the Track and Field Booster Club. And I have been, I have volunteered for many activities in the Shakopee Girls Basketball Association. And I support local businesses. And I'm a current, I was appointed to the school board. And I've been having a fun time serving, so thank you.
Brian Kane, you will be first for this next question. What are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
Some of the greatest challenges in public education right now are teaching our kids back to the basics and also making sure that when there's referendums or levies to bring to the public, that there is discussion, well, a deep discussion before, so that all voters are informed. And what was the second part again?
What are the greatest challenges and also the greatest opportunities?
The greatest opportunities for our school district are to enable all students to be safe in the schools, to not revert back to distance learning or any masking, and to give parents a say in their education, not the school board, not the Minnesota School Board Association, I mean, not the school board, the Teachers Union and the Minnesota School Board Association.
David Melby, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
Well, I think one of the biggest challenges going on now is the, all of the special interest groups that are applying a pressure onto the school system. So we have everything from national governments, state governments, and a whole slew of other groups that are trying to help make decisions for the school system. We really need to get back to the basics where we can have the parents collaborating with the teachers to run the school system. And we need to provide for the teachers the tools that they need so that they can teach our kids the basic stuff. And we have a lot of stuff like adult content that's coming into the school system. And we really need to step in and be the adults and make sure that our kids have great opportunities and not turn it into a Sodom and Gomorrah.
Kristy Peterson, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
I think one of the biggest challenges that school districts face right now are the teacher shortages. This isn't just a Shakopee issue. This is a statewide issue and a national level issue. If we don't have teachers in the classroom, we don't have substitute teachers that are able to step in and fill in. That's going to hurt the opportunities for our children and their ability to learn. And we all know that it's a profession that people are not going into like they used to. People are retiring. COVID has really made people retire early because of all of the challenges and the changes and the pivots that teachers had to do during that time. So that is a significant challenge. I also think that one of the challenges that we face is funding. And you've heard earlier tonight about fully funded schools. And what that, what does that really mean? Well, when states and federal governments mandate you to provide programs, they don't always provide the funding. And that's where our shortfalls are in our schools.
Zachary Pearson, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
I think one of the biggest challenges that needs to be addressed and that is an ongoing challenge is mental health. And we've seen that with school shootings and school violence across the country. And I think at the root cause of that is mental health. And I think kids are being bombarded with a lot of tough issues that they may or may not be mentally equipped to handle. And I think that that's why we're seeing a lot of the outbursts and the violence. And coupled with that, I think another challenge that we have is keeping our kids safe. I think a lot of the measures that have been put in place in our school systems have done the opposite and have not kept our kids safe. And I think we need to look at what actually works.
Nick Stepka, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
Well, I would say in Shakopee, probably one of the challenges, and I just saw this today on social media again, is bullying. There's bullying on buses currently. And there's not, there's not much being done about it. Another challenge for the Shakopee public schools is the public trust in their finances. I know I was an opponent to it, to the levy. And I just think that they need to be extremely transparent, not just high-level overview. Opportunities, I would say increased test scores is a huge opportunity for us and also a more unified student body.
Caroline Valdez, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
Well, I have to agree with Kristy that staff shortage has been an issue. We need to find very talented people. We need to attract talented people here in Shakopee, make Shakopee the school of choice. I would also have to say that student learning performance, not everybody learns the same way. And we need to find, you know, what works for the students, the best, think about the student's best interest. I think areas of opportunities, you know, is, you know, inclusion, diversity and inclusion. So I think that we need to make sure we empower our students, make them feel that they belong, and support it.
Joe Aldrich, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
A lot of the good points have already been brought up. A lack of teachers, a lack of pairs, a lack of school bus drivers to get the kids to school in the first place. Bullying is an issue, but the opportunities are endless that we can do in the school. Education is the great equalizer. And if the students put in their head that they can do anything, the Shakopee School District has made advancements so that these kids can succeed. And the opportunities that these kids for their future and right now are endless. The classes that we have right now at the high schools, some of the, I've looked at the curriculum, it's unbelievable, the class you can take in finance and health, just with the advancement of these classes are just, the kids have such great opportunities. Thank you.
Chad Johnson, what are the greatest challenges and opportunities in public education?
So certainly, COVID was a huge challenge. None of us liked it. It was tough to get through. It was really disappointing to see an element of our community use COVID to oppose the levy. And if their demands weren't met, they weren't going to support the levy. Some of the other candidates brought up things like special interests. I do, I do see some different special interests that want distinct, minute control over the content that can be included in classrooms and what facts can and cannot be talked about. I think that's troubling. Some of the opportunities that we have. So Mr. Stepka mentioned transparency and public trust. That's huge for me. I think that's been a longstanding issue. There's more that we can do in that area to, to kind of, not just dump the financial books on people and say, well, it's public, but to simplify and make it easier to understand and make sure everyone has it available.
Kristy Peterson, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
Well, I've been on the school board for the past four years. And I will tell you that I have poured my heart into everything related to our kids and their future over the past four years. Being on the school board is not an easy job. And I would have to think that Caroline and Joe would have to agree, as well as other board members, that the past four years have been very difficult to be a school board member because of COVID. And so we've had a lot of challenges and a lot of things that we've had to face. But I feel that I've had a lot of leadership skills and other experiences that I've been able to bring to the table and help lead our district through that. And in addition to that, being involved in the State School Board Association as a Board of Director, just advocating for our kids, not only just in Shakopee, but in the entire state of Minnesota. Our kids deserve it, and that's our future. And our future economy depends on education that our students receive today and in the future.
Zachary Pearson, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
I have held positions in past employment and leadership and management. I also served on my former HOA board as vice president for two and a half years. I managed budgets and various other aspects of the HOA board, along with the president of the board at the time. Other than that, I'm a dad of three girls. And one of them is in Shakopee schools. And the next two will be on their way very soon. And so I'm a dad. I'm concerned for my kids. And I believe that I share a lot of the same concerns that other parents have. And that's why I'm running.
Nick Stepka, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
Well, in previous jobs, like other people on this, up here, I've worked in management on many different levels, whether it's automotive service centers or auto parts stores. Currently, I do research and development. So I constantly try to find improvement for things and constantly testing things to their limits. And I'm also not afraid to ask why. Whenever people come to places of business with business proposals and, you know, bids and stuff like that, a lot of times, people just kind of look over it and gloss over it and approve it. I'm not afraid to ask why, figure out what the warranties are and all those other small details that everyone just looks over.
Caroline Valdez, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
Well, I feel my background in recruiting would help me with the school board. I mean, I understand the staffing issues that are going on. And I have been a director of career services. And I've helped students with mock interviews, resume building, and I've placed students in jobs. You know, I've gone out to companies and advocated for, to hire our students, my students at a for-profit college that I worked for. So, I mean, I have that background in higher education. And I feel my experience in HR would help our students. I have a passion for helping.
Joe Aldrich, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
I'm currently the chief financial officer of an insurance brokerage. And I have been working on budgets for more than twenty-five years. I have been the treasurer of the Shakopee School Board the last four years. And I have made suggestions to the finance director on what kind of reporting would be best for the school board to see so that we know exactly what's going on. They have, they've listened to me. We get great reports every month on just revenue versus expenditure so that we know that the mistakes that happened six, seven years ago won't happen again. And I will continue using my knowledge of budgets after I am re-elected for the next four years.
Chad Johnson, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
Thanks. So I've had about a twenty-year career in information technology, starting with fixing hardware and moving on to just fixing greater and greater problems and on to fixing complex problems with large-scale enterprise software. So problem solving in general. Later in my career, I went into project management. So as a project manager, you have to get people to do things that you want to do, you want them to do, even though you're not their boss. So that's, can be tough to navigate. And it's an interesting skill set that I'm still building. And the other thing is, more recently in my career, I've moved to program-level management. So I have multiple projects in my portfolio. Last year, it was twelve million dollars. So not on the level of the school board's budget, but still big budgets. So problem solving, working with, working well with people and managing budgets.
Brian Kane, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
For twenty years prior, I was in management in a nursing home. So I got to know the budgetary difficulties that family have and managing other employees. And then towards the last few years, I've been in management and retail. So I've learned how to critically think and treat other coworkers and the younger kids and teenagers that work with me with critical thinking skills on an individual level instead of giving it to like the corporate-type group think. And I have four daughters, and I have two that are in the high school right now. And that's part of why I want to run.
David Melby, what skills and experience would you bring to the school board?
Well, besides working with my own kids and kids in the community, I have a BA in journalism and a master's in business. And I've worked for ten years as a data and business analyst. So I know about the processes, looking at the processes and how to streamline them. And I've worked a lot with HR data. So as an HR analyst and HR forecasting. And I'm someone that's respectful. I get along with most people. But at the same time, I'm not afraid to question what's going on. And a few years back, when we had a lot of problems, if people would have questioned what was going on, maybe we wouldn't have had all the problems we did. So I am, overall, I think I'm a great candidate for the school board.
Nick Stepka, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
I think the most important issue facing the school district right now is the declining test scores. I think a lot of it, well, when I was, today, when I was looking at, just I was looking at a couple of things as a quick refresher. And I noticed that the test scores in Shakopee do really well in elementary. And then, once we go to middle school, they drop significantly. And they rebound a little bit more in high school. I'm not sure why that is. But I would definitely like to work with the teachers and the staff in the middle schools to figure out what kind of challenges that these kids are facing during that transition from elementary to middle school and see how we can make it better.
Caroline Valdez, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
Well, I think the number one issue, I feel, is mental health. I mean, COVID has done a number of things to people. And not just students, but teachers as well. And I just want to make sure that they have all the resources they need and everything's available for them. But I think we need to continue to focus on that.
Joe Aldrich, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
I think the most important issue is getting kids caught back up after having hybrid learning for the last two years. It's, it's not just a Shakopee issue. It's an issue in the entire nation. And I think, I think what we need is to take high school seniors and juniors and have them become mentors to younger kids to just try to get the children who did not do very well during hybrid and distant to be able to get caught up. The faster we can get the kids caught back up to where they need to be, the better our schools will be.
Chad Johnson, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
Yeah, common answer, catching up from COVID. I do think there's, I'm confident that if we keep doing what we're doing, our schools do well, we will catch up, but we still need to give a push. So I'm not an educator. I can't say do exactly this, that will make the test scores go up. What I can do and what I'm good at is finding experts, listening to their expertise, and building a group consensus, what's the best way to go forward to solve this.
Brian Kane, what do you believe is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
I would have to say also, too, as a result of COVID, more support for not only our students, but for our teachers also in the stressful, or stressful time the last two years gave them. And also a better grasp of transparency when new referendums or levies come forward. So that, not saying to open up all the books, but to make the general public more aware of what the actual issues are instead of being, being told, or being, hearing it from other residents or hearsay. So that more transparency in that would be better. And also to touch on the mental health, too. Our kids have been affected. I have two daughters that, my two oldest, one's a senior, one's a freshman. And I can see that they've had a very difficult time the last two years, but they're coming out of it. My two youngest were homeschooled because of lack of a job for my wife at the time. And they've struggled a little bit more. But it's mostly for support for the kids and first, and then the teachers, too, because they were through a lot of stress.
David Melby, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
Well, I think one of the biggest things is the lack of parents being able to get involved. It used to be school systems were about parents and teachers working together to run a school system. And the school board was there to help administer that. And now, it seems like with all these special interest groups, that parents are kind of pushed aside. And oftentimes, they're not even listened to. So I think we need more of that parent-teacher collaboration. And then also, community members should, you know, be able to get their voices heard, too, without fear of reprisal. And so, you know, if the, people have good ways of getting their ideas out there, such as blogs or having a good email that they can write to where someone's going to answer it and stuff like that, I think is really important moving forward.
Kristy Peterson, what is the most important issue facing the school district right now? And what would you do about it?
I share some of the same sentiments as some of the other candidates up here. It's catching up with COVID. And there's a lot that goes with catching up with COVID. You know, Shakopee schools cut seven and a half million dollars out of our budget during COVID. And that was a time where we really needed to add resources to help our students, to keep them on track. And Shakopee was unique in that situation. We were not able to do that because we were trying to balance the budget. And we were cutting teachers and we were increasing class sizes. So when you do that, there is a major impact on learning. So now that we have an operating levy that's in place, we can focus on getting our kids back up to speed. We need to continue the, some of the programs with the credit recovery, as well as some of the support, the MTSS, which is a multiple-tier support system for our students, and also mental health. And mental health, not just of our students, but we also have to remember the mental health of our teachers as well. That's equally as important.
Zachary Pearson, what is the most important issue facing the school district? And what would you do about it?
I have to agree with several points, mental health being one of those that I kind of touched on earlier. Obviously, coming out of COVID is a challenging situation that we have to navigate as well. I think for Shakopee public schools, one of the biggest challenges is regaining public trust and transparency. I think this community was bruised by a former superintendent and the mismanagement of funds. And while the school board and the school district have done a good job, Uh trending in the right direction, I still think that there's work to be done there and I still think that we have a serious issue uh with public trust. And people not trusting the school board to operate uh i- in full transparency of what's going on with the budget.
Chad Johnson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that should be eliminated or reduced?
Programs that should be eliminated or reduced? I, I guess I don't see any. I feel like we have uh a really rich curriculum that. Covers uh not only the basics, you know, the, the phrase back to basics was brought up. I would argue that we've never gotten away from the basics. Uh, we've added to and improved them. Um, um, I, I'm. Six, seventh grade year old me would have been thrilled at the opportunities that my son has in school, like engineering, robotics, coding. That stuff is amazing to me, so it's honestly no, nothing jumps out, it's like desperately needing to be cut.
Brian Kane, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you believe should be eliminated or reduced?
Uh, the one major area that I think should uh possibly be eliminated or reduced, but I would say more the eliminated side. Would be the diversity, equity and inclusion department and the way that uh. Um ideology has sunk into our teachers' classrooms towards our students. We are the parents, we are the ones that are to raise our children. We don't need to have. A department teaching our children what's right or what's wrong or what they should do and how they should treat others. According to their race, their ethnicity or their sexual preference. I think that all of that stuff does is divide, which is not beneficial to the unity of our teachers. Our other staff, our students and for all the residents of the school district.
David Melby, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
Well, uh, I'm not sure if we need artificial turf on our uh football field. Um, and uh, but I, I think that there's overall, there's a lot of areas that I think. That we could improve on and some of those might be to eliminate some things, but. We need really community involvement and if we have input from the community more and uh. And parents that we um, you know, will be better able to. Uh, you know, know how to streamline things, cause right now. We have limited resources, but all I hear more is we need more money, we need more of this, we need more of that and. We've only got so much of that, so we need to find ways to streamline and uh find areas that we can uh cut back.
Kristy Peterson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
We just went through and cut seven and a half million dollars worth of budget cuts. And with the levy passing, yes, we did bring back some of those cuts. But we permanently cut four million dollars out of our expenses, permanent cuts. And that was all across the board, programs that we are not involved with anymore or we don't have interest or we don't need, we needed to change something. It was um support positions, superintendent's office, for example, had elimination of positions and restructuring. Um, you know, I, I wanna go back to um a comment that was just made in regards to funding. When we say that we need more money, as I said earlier, school districts need to be fully funded. And what that means is when the state says you have to provide a program, you have to provide it. And if they don't provide the funding, you still have to provide it. And that takes away out of the operating funds for other kids in our district.
Zachary Pearson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
Well, I obviously don't have a list of uh programs in front of me, so I guess I can't speak directly to items that should or shouldn't be cut. Um, I'd be willing to bet that there are probably some uh items that could go and could be adjusted and spending could be tailored here and there. Um, at any rate, I believe that the district uh can do a better job of working within the budget. And being uh better stewards of the community's money. Um, obviously the levy already passed, but it passed at a time when uh. The community as well as the entire nation is hurting financially. Um, and I think it, the timing is poor. And I think we can do a better job. Um, one area where I do think we could look at uh potentially cutting back is some of the salaries. Um, I think that there are some people in high positions that are getting an astronomical amount of money and I'd question whether or not that's necessary.
Nick Stepka, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
Well, a, a lot of the points that I wanted to make have already been said, but I, I will definitely say that I don't, like, just like my, just like Zach here said. I, I don't have a list in front of me of all the um organizations or all, everywhere all the money is going. The only thing you can really find online is a really high level overview. Um, but I do think that there is spending that, that could be reduced. Um, or programs that could be eliminated if they're no longer needed. Um, I understand that we have done a great job at that, but I think we can do a better job at it.
Caroline Valdez, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
No, um Kristy said best, we've already done some budget cuts and we cannot cut anything else. I mean, that's not gonna affect our students. So no, there's no budget cuts that could be made.
And Joe Aldrich, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be eliminated or reduced?
I don't believe so. I think we can be, we can look at efficiencies, we can try to, if, if, if needed. Efficiency is everything. I'm gonna go back with what Kristy said earlier about the federal and state mandates. We have eight million dollars in unfunded mandates that basically comes out of our general fund. If, if the government had fully funded that eight million dollars. We would not probably have had to raise uh the levy as high as we did and we would be able to pay teachers more. We were at the lowest, pretty much the lowest of the thirteen competitive uh school districts. And with the levy passing, especially uh question two, we were able to get those teachers up to the midpoint and that's a great start. But our teachers sh- deserve to be paid well. So to, to say that anything should be cut, no, unless we can make things more efficient and, and actually provide more into the classroom.
For this next question, David Melby, uh you will go first. Are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that should be added or expanded?
Um, well, I would say uh definitely we need to expand the accessibility. For uh the community to look at every, uh all the processes. That are being used in the school system and then also uh, you know, the budget, uh we should have. Uh detailed access to the budget. Now, we don't wanna, you know, give away. Uh people's personal salary, like teachers' personal salary or age or whatever, so not personal information. Um, but as a data analyst, I know that unless if you can look through everything. And give it to everybody, we have all kinds of people in the community that have all kinds of ideas, so. If we let the community in to see what's going on, they're gonna have all kinds of ideas for us, so. I think that's the one thing we need to expand is just the accessibility to, to look at the processes and uh budgets. Detailed budgets.
Kristy Peterson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
Well, as part of the operating levy, we asked for additional dollars specifically to add activities for our students. And uh with our activity director, there was a group of community members that came together and, and did an analysis of activities. And opportunities in other districts and how Shakopee compared. And we were significantly behind some of these offerings for our students. And when we have an activity or an educational opportunity for every student, they feel like they belong and they build confidence. So anytime that we can add programs or activities to expand their um, to spread their wings and to grow. Uh whether it's in the classroom or outside of it in a club activity, um we need to do that. I think one area where there's. An opportunity for expansion is our fine arts programs. Um, the addition of plays in both the middle and the high school. Um, is really important, so all kids have an opportunity to participate. Right now, um, e- especially at the middle school level, we don't have that opportunity and kids um. Are being cut from being in plays because of the lack of, of programming that we have in that area.
Zachary Pearson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
Um, well, I think we need to get middle school sports uh back up in full swing. Um, I think that's, I, I don't know exactly when that was cut, but I think that's a priority that needs to be addressed. Um, in addition to that, I think the focus should be on. You know, as, as has been mentioned here, you know, more of, I guess, just focusing on. Basic education and preparing students to enter the real world, preparing students to enter the workforce. Um, programs that focus on helping students decide what they wanna do with their life once they exit the educational system. Um, career trials, things like that. I think that needs to be uh a focus uh that I don't think is heavily emphasized at this point.
Nick Stepka, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that should be added or expanded?
Well, um, a few others have mentioned about different clubs and stuff that, that came into this door that we, that. That they wanna introduce into the school. There was one, I, I was the one, I was thinking about introducing that was a fishing club, but I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't, didn't we just add something like that recently?
Yes, we do have a fishing club.
Yeah, cause that was one of the things I was talking to my daughter the, the other weekend about. Um, but getting the students involved in some sort of club. Is gonna help develop unity within the student body and also within the community. It'll get the. Students out and their parents out, they get more people talking to each other. Um, some of these people up here I have never seen before. Um, but it'll get people talking to each other and getting to know each other and it'll get them off of screens, which actually hurts communication.
Caroline Valdez, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
So I'm gonna echo what Nick said and Kristy said about activities. I think activities is A, very important. For our students to make them feel they belong and empower them with new opportunities. And I wanna also expand on, you know, my HR recruiting experience. I think we need to partner with communities. Um, and businesses to help our students, you know, find jo- job opportunities, whether that's internships. You know, I love the um, the academy model that Shakopee has and I just want that to continue to grow.
Joe Aldrich, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
This was mentioned earlier before in this debate, but I think that uh having more. Uh counselors dealing with mental health of the students is very important as there's just a lot out there. Uh bullying on social media is. I'm, I'm glad I graduated from high school thirty some years ago because the, the bullying on social media. Uh what I've read and what I've seen is, is overwhelming for these kids and I think that their mental health is uh. Taking a hit. Um, and, and activities, you know, having a student in a, in activities, it gets them more involved. Uh, the more you get involved with activities, the better you're gonna do in school. It's, it's been proven uh time after time. That the more that a child is involved, the better they will do in school. So it's. We, we've had a list at the, in the last couple of school board meetings of all the activities that are out there. And we just need uh students to participate. Uh, but they're, but they're great and hopefully we can even have more.
Chad Johnson, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
Sure, so one that's personal to me is uh a high potential program for elementary school level. Uh, we have that in place for um kids from uh backgrounds that are underrepresented in high potential programs. Uh, I would like to see that expand to all kids uh in, at the elementary level. Um, but that's uh very personal to me, cause uh my son could have used that. Um, another thing that the budget could use is a, a publicist. Um, we're all used to uh easily digestible tidbits of information coming at us constantly. Um, and the budget is not that. Um, maybe we could make it more like that uh to uh, you know, in the spirit of transparency. And lastly, uh, you know, um, there was a lot of talk about activities. Um, I will just say my experience with Lego League is uh, if you want more activities, you should be prepared to coach them. Um, but our community ed program uh is really awesome, uh so, yeah, that's all.
And Brian Kane, are there any programs or areas of the school district budget that you feel should be added or expanded?
Well, the areas that I think should be expanded is the great work that our academies are doing. And I would have to also agree with uh counseling services for those. Kids that are being, not so much bullied, but are having a hard time coming out of post-COVID. And their um counselors need to have a little bit, not so much expanded, but added. Uh monetary help into that area. And I would also like to also agree with others here too, that increasing um the uh. Funds for um middle school sports and STEM learning and engineering projects like Lego and things like that. And also to um build up our student self-esteem through teaching them how to critically think for themselves as individuals. Instead of being stuck in with the group, the group think. Um, and uh that's where bullying and disunity and hurt, you know, hurt starts with the group kids.
Uh, in the interest of time, let's make this next question a thirty second response. Uh Zachary Pearson, you will be first. How should the school district ensure the safety of students?
Well, I believe that we need to start by um looking at common sense measures. Uh, I've seen a lot of things online like uh. Unique door locks and things like that, um where it's impossible for somebody to gain access to a room. Uh, in the event of uh, you know, a crisis. Um, things like that that are. Are easily installed and don't add a bunch of expense to the budget would be a good place to start, but ultimately I believe. Um, that somebody who wants to do harm is deterred by a good guy with a gun in school. Um, and I believe that's what we need to look at.
Nick Stepka, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
Um, well, my uh Zach here said, said a lot of things I wanted to say. Um, but I, I, I do agree with the fact of that we're gonna, that we would need more public resource officers. Inside the schools, um and, and also better ways to secure the doors with. Checks and balances in place to, you know, like if a door was locked, we need a, a visual or we need an uh. An alert to the office that hey, this door was locked by this person.
Caroline Valdez, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
We just need to continue to work with our local law enforcement and make sure that we have um security. And um our, our emergency response plan is in intact.
Joe Aldrich, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
So at our most recent school board meeting on Monday, we actually uh passed. Or we approved the uh agreement to have more resource officers in the school. It's, it's great. One of our uh. Uh student school board members told us about how much they just like to have. You know, they, they trust these officers in the school and by trusting these officers that are already in the school, that, that gets us. Uh, a long way into ensuring the safety.
Chad Johnson, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
So building safety has already been talked about as far as physical security. Um, mental health has been brought up many times tonight. Uh, one thing I can add to this conversation is I think um, I think in a way that diversity, the inclusion is a safety measure. Uh, in the sense that it builds a sense of community among the students. Um, I think it is okay and good to teach kids to respect people from different backgrounds who they might. They might not encounter outside of their school life. Um, so that's one aspect.
Brian Kane, what do you believe uh should be done to ensure the safety of students?
Again, I would agree with many here to increase the amount of uh. Police that are the police officers that are there, not so much to be hung up on locking down the schools and things like that. I would also go as far to say to possibly have. Uh, teachers or even staff members that have uh the right to conceal and carry to. Uh, wear uh a firearm within the school district. Because if somebody's dressed as an officer and somebody wants to do harm to the students and teachers in the school. The first person they're gonna point out and is the person that's in uniform.
David Melby, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
Well, I think it really starts at teaching our. Well, I think it really starts at teaching our kids at a young age. We want to be able to nurture them and let kids be kids, so they're not dealing with adult issues until they're adults. And then we want to have unity and respect, as my kids would tell me. And we also want to have respect and diversity of ideas. So my ideas shouldn't be looked at as a hateful thing, but you should respect my ideas and be able to talk about them.
Christie Peterson, how should the school district ensure the safety of students?
A lot of what I was going to say has already been said with school resource officers. I think it's important to know that our school resource officers establish relationships with students, which gives them a sense of, of security and safety in our schools. But I am not in favor of having guns in the classroom and, and put that responsibility on our teachers. That's, that's just, that's not their job. Their job is to educate our students. Their job is not to learn how to shoot a gun.
And for our final question tonight, Caroline Valdez, you'll be first. Are there any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
Are there any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
You know, I don't think there's any changes that need to be made to the curriculum.
Joe Aldrich, do you see any changes that are needed to the curriculum for the public schools?
I think that the, I think it's, I think the classes right now that the students have are really good. They have expanded, especially through the academies, what the, what the kids can learn. And I think the classes are great.
Chad Johnson, are any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned elementary level high potential. I think that's relatively minor and of special interest to me. There's been some mention in the campaign and, and tonight of back to basics. I would encourage people to think about what that really means. What are the basics? When did we get away from them? Because I think we are solidly on them and more. You know, we've had the, the basics plus more enrichment beyond that.
Brian Kane, do you believe that any changes are needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
Yes, and like I mentioned already earlier is the, the particular area and department of equity, diversity and inclusion. And I don't say that just to get rid of it or anything, but not to have the teachers pushing it in classes just about every class that kids are going to. They have something to have to do with inclusion, diversity. And that's not to nod people who want it, but a primary person that brings up our children are the parents, not the students, not, or not the teachers and not the school board, or the school district and the administration. It starts in the home.
David Melby, are any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
Well, I would argue about bringing back the old math. And my kids bring home their math and I have no idea what they're doing. It takes me a while to learn it. So maybe it's doing some good, but it's, I think it's a more difficult way to learn, but some of it's probably good. And I just think that, that ongoing, we need to make changes, keep making changes. Be honest about what we're doing good and about what we need to change or redo. So we always need to be continually looking at what we can do to improve.
Christie Peterson, are any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
I think we have a very robust curriculum in Shakopee with many opportunities for our students. One of the things you have to remember with the curriculum is that the state does, the Department of Education does drive some of that curriculum from a base level. And school districts then can build upon that with additional classes and opportunities for students. For example, financial literacy. Financial literacy is something that's been brought forward at the state Capitol to be part of a required class to graduate from high school. We have that in Shakopee. That's not a requirement at the state, but that's something that we have in our curriculum that we require our students to graduate. So I think we have a really robust curriculum. I think that we're very fortunate in Shakopee to have the community partners that we have so that our students can go out and explore careers and have opportunities right in the workplace and to gain that career experience and something that they might desire to go on and, and have a career in in the future.
Zachary Pearson, are any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
Yeah, I would like to kind of address a little bit Chad's question about when we got away from the basics. And I, I don't think that we've gotten away from the basics, but I think we've added a lot of things to the basics that don't need to be there. Namely, critical race theory, which is in the curriculum. And I understand Christie's point that it's, some of the stuff is state mandated. But to the extent that we have the ability to deviate from those things, that's what we need to do. We need to get back to focusing on the fact that we're all human beings. And instead of looking at all the ways that we're different and emphasizing everything by skin color and race and ethnicity and religion, let's focus on the fact that we're all students here in Shakopee and that we're all part of community. And let's teach these kids how to think and not what to think.
Nick Stupka, are any changes needed to the curriculum for Shakopee Public Schools?
There's only so much that, that the Shakopee Public School can do at a school level. Like, like it was mentioned before, a lot of it is done at the state level. But I, I do believe that we need to scale back wherever we can on some of the hot button topics like the CRT and the over, the over sexualization of books that are being offered in, in libraries. And I, I would have to also say that a few more high potential teachers would be a very good thing.
Our time is running out. Anyone whose questions have not been answered should contact the candidates or their campaign offices. You can find more information about the candidates at the chamber's website, shakopee.org. Each candidate will now have one minute for the closing statement. The order of closing statements was selected by drawing. First will be Caroline Valdez.
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and everyone in the audience. I just wanted to say that I want to continue the momentum that I've, that I've started. And I promise to be an active listener, open minded, and be the voice of the community. And I will put our students and our teachers first. I feel that my background in HR recruiting would add value to the school board. And, you know, I just enjoy helping students succeed. And I hope to have your vote in November eighth. Thank you.
Brian Kane?
To the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you for holding this forum. And I really appreciated the opportunity to speak here tonight to the citizens of school district seven twenty. I would also like to thank all of the other candidates here tonight. To close, I would like to share that in American law, all authority must originate somewhere. The people's natural rights come from God. The people of Minnesota created government in the schools via the Constitution, granting authority to teachers to conduct the people's business in educating our children. The problem is there is no constitutional authority for teachers to teach identity and ideology. Show me where it is. If you cannot find the authority in law, it does not exist.
Christie Peterson?
Over the last four years, I've invested a lot of time into becoming a strong and effective school board member. And I would look forward to continuing that. Everything that I've learned over the past four years and applying that to the positive momentum that we have in our school district. But I would ask all of our, our audience tonight, as well as people at home, a question. Do you want a school district with significant positive momentum that will prepare our students to be successful into the future? Or do you want a school district that will revert back to the nineteen seventies, to the back to the basics notion of education? I'll leave that decision up to you. But if you want a school district that provides opportunities for our students to grow into the future and to be successful into the future, I would ask for your vote on November eighth.
Chad Johnson?
Again, thanks to, to the chamber. Hope you guys all get to sleep in tomorrow. So we talked about earlier, public trust was shattered by our former superintendent. That superintendent is long gone. That, that entire school board is gone. If I could ask everyone to remember that it's the school board that we have now that got us out of that mess. I'd love it if you would elect me to join them. So Mr. Aldrich, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Valdez. So I'm glad that we have enough trust restored that we were able to pass the levy. We, we've gotten ourselves to the level of funding needed to give our students the education and enrichment that they deserve, the same as surrounding communities have. I feel like the school board's job now is to honor that public's trust and be the best stewards of that funding that we can be. Get the most value out of that money that we can. So Shakopee schools are strongly positioned for success. The reason why I'm running is to protect that future.
Joe Aldrich?
Thank you to the chamber for giving us the last hour, past some of our bedtimes. March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, we found out about a five and a half million dollar budget deficit. And on that day, I decided I was probably going to run in two thousand eighteen for the, for the school board. The district was in turmoil. In the last four years, which have been the longest four years and really the best four years, even though sometimes it's felt like eight, felt like twelve, we have, we've, we've passed the levy. We, we cut four million dollars permanently from the budget. And we have positive momentum that I want to be a part of going forward into the future. I hope that you've seen my, what I've brought to the board for the last four years. And I hope that you will give me your vote between now and November eighth. Thank you. Have a good night.
Nick Stupka?
Well, I, I'm, hold on, you kind of caught me off guard. I, I look forward, well, first I want to thank the, the school or the, the chamber and the fellow candidates up here. I look forward to getting your nomination and listening to the parents of the community to see what, what's needed for, for their kids. I want to work as a team with the school board when I get nominated and also with, with the community. I'm transparent. I'm really good at problem solving, and I would not have another First Amendment lawsuit on the school.
David Melby?
Well, thank you Shakopee Chamber of Commerce for putting on the event. It's been a long night for you guys. And like one person said, I hope you get a good night's sleep. And I also want to thank the school board members up here who have been working tirelessly for the last four years. If I'm elected, I can promise that I will work for the community and for the parents. And that I will work to cut out any of the financial burdens that's placed on the community. And I think that we should be able to have high standards, not just to be like everybody else, like every other community. But when it comes to financial stability, I think that we should have a higher standard than we do now. And it's, the answer shouldn't always be more money, more resources. And I understand that people get in tight spots. But if you elect me, I promise that I will work for the community and for the parents.
And Zachary Pearson?
Well, thank you, as everyone else has mentioned, to the Shakopee Chamber for orchestrating this event. Thank you to everybody in the audience for being here and for all of you who are watching this either live or at home. Thank you to the candidates for also being here and, and participating. I guess what I would like to pose to you is if you agree with the direction that the Shakopee Public School District has been going for the last several years, then you have a clear choice for the three candidates that are up here who have been a part of that. However, if you believe that we need a change in direction and that it's time for a change in the way things are, are being run, and you want to get back to basics in teaching kids the fundamentals that they need to get back into the real world once they leave the educational system, you have other choices. Regardless of your feeling or your opinion, I encourage everybody to vote on November eighth. Thank you.
As we close this candidate forum, please remember that the views expressed in tonight's debate are those of the candidates and not those of the Chamber and Visitors Bureau. The chamber sponsors this event as a service to the community and has gone to extraordinary lengths to ensure the objectivity of this forum. The chamber does not endorse any candidate. Instead, we seek to provide the voters of Shakopee with the information that you need to make informed choices when you vote. Thank you to the audience this evening and to River Valley Church for hosting our event. On behalf of the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau, thank you to all the candidates. We appreciate your time and your service to the community. Election Day is Tuesday, November eighth. Please remember to vote. Thank you and good night.